Everyone to the October tenth, twenty twenty-three Register Planning Board Meeting. We are being recorded both on Zoom and via Wind Cam. Thank you, Wind Cam. If you don't wish to be recorded, please turn off your video and your audio feeds. We have a quorum with us this evening, so let me go around. And please say you're present. Sally Dale.
Present.
Nick Rosettis.
Present.
Yiching Scott.
President.
Carrie Layton.
Present.
And I'm Dean Chereus. I am present as well. We also have with us Taylor Herman Town Planner. Nancy Polkari, our, I know you're here somewhere, Nancy. I saw you before. Nancy Polkari, our Recording Secretary. Matt Schuman, Town Engineer. We have a number of other people associated with Waterfield. I'm a little bit under the weather this evening, so I'm going to be turning over the gavel to Sally and Taylor. So I will first turn it over to Taylor, who's going to run us up through, I think, I guess, whatever. Taylor, it's all yours.
Good evening, everyone. We'll open up this, this meeting tonight, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, with any updates from the board?
Um, I have some updates on Twenty Glenwood. I don't know. Others have heard, but Twenty Glenwood is a piece of property, twenty-eight hundred square feet, that the town had taken over. And the town meeting had authorized Select Board to either hope to do what it can to get affordable housing on it. And so there was an RQ, RFP during the summer in August, and only one respondent, a next-door neighbor, offered forty thousand. This Select Board voted to sell it to them. I think it was a three-one-zero vote, or three-one-one absentee vote. And it was going to go under purchase and sale this past week, but the Affordable Housing Trust voted to take, to, to offer the Select Board that they would take it on, so they have money. And they had the means and ability to possibly be the ones to make it an affordable housing. And so the Select Board, the Housing Partnership endorsed it, or favorable action for that. And the Select Board received that and decided to pause into taking that information. They have since received a letter from neighbors who are urging them to take the purchase and sale and to continue with the sale. But right now, it's in sort of a hiatus.
Interesting.
That's what I have.
Yiching, do you know what, what the, what the next steps are there?
I think the Select Board has to make a decision. But also, I think that there were talks about how the process didn't go through, maybe all it could have, including our board, and seeing, having seen, seen any of it, really, the RP or the proposals. And we didn't have, we weren't in, brought into the decision. And so that was one, another point to pause and to perhaps rethink this.
So the, the RFP was written, I think, a couple of years ago. And has only just recently been released. And I think we were involved, and I remember being involved with the discussions around the RFP with Brian. So there was perhaps some informal discussion with Planning Board, but it's a Select Board, it's a town property, so the actual RFP process goes through the state-bandeded venues or channels. So I don't, is there indication that it didn't go through those channels?
Um, I, there was some kind of legality point to it that I am not totally able to articulate. But the acceptance of it and it, it just didn't go through enough committees and boards for some reason, is one point that, so therefore, it needs to have a pause. And also, another sort of offer from the Affordable Housing Trust is on the table, too, to, to be, to handle that from now on.
Okay, I mean, it's
So the, hoping that the community, the CPA, Community Preservation Act, might be able to help with some of this and be kind of a new channel in how that the town does small, smaller developments for affordable housing.
Yeah, it's just the, the Planning Board has no role in this process, technically. So I'm a little confused as to
Yeah, there was some kind of, some kind of state law portion that, that Mike Betancourt and John Serbiar were more understanding of than I am. And that, that asked that it go through a little bit more vetting before it happened.
Okay. That's interesting.
Um, I, I have one comment, um, and no edits.
Um, so on page two, I had in my notes from our, last time we looked at these, that Yiching was going to make some edits to the PB Discussion Bullets, or maybe it was that she was going to set these up as FAQs on our
No, Nancy incorporated my, my comments in that.
Okay, okay, good. So then I have no edits or comments. Thank you, Yiching.
Thank you, Nancy.
And Nancy.
Nothing for me.
So I guess it's either me or Sally who has to call for a vote, because I don't think Taylor can do that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
I'll move that.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Roll call vote, please. Nick?
Aye.
Carrie? Thank you, Carrie.
Or approve in form by, what is it, approve in form? Because I wasn't at that meeting, so whichever is appropriate.
Whichever, I think
If you weren't there, then you can abstain.
Okay, great.
Okay, Yiching?
Um, yay. But I think, um, the council had said that the, the other, that Carrie can approve.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, Carrie, do you wish to change your vote?
I'm not approving the, the, the council's comment at the, um, oh, what was it? Like the, whatever, is saying that I would approve them by inform but not content. So as long as we have quorum and they get approved by people there, I'll abstain.
Ah, I see.
Okay, um, so I think we've had, I've asked everyone but myself, I think. So I, I say aye as well, so we have a four-zero-one vote. And we can move on to the next one, which is
Great. Sally, you want to take over? Tuesday, September twenty-first. Any comments from anyone on the board?
Um, I had a question on page one, which is in the lower part of the page, the fourth bullet, where it says, have the two members of the ADU Working Group that had, that had identified this issue been contacted? And the answer was no. And my question is, should one of us talk to those two members, just to let them know?
Sure, I don't.
So that's not about the notes, really, right? So
Right, it just prompted a question, so maybe I should hold it. Otherwise, I have no edits.
I spoke with them in the first, in that conversation, and I, I can, I can reach out to them.
Okay. So I have no edits.
Um, if there are no further Sorry, brain is not working tonight.
So I move that the Planning Board approved the Tuesday, September twenty-one, meeting minutes.
And is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Yiching?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I haven't had a chance to read this. So we go on to the last one, please.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Yiching.
Oh, I just have one on the updates, um, under Ms. Scott, the number one, uh, the twenty-six hundred square foot lot. That's an error. So I would rather it not be, if it would just scratch that out and just say the lot at Glenwood. I think it's twenty-eight hundred.
That, that sounds fine to me, either way. You said twenty-eight hundred when you gave your update.
I'd rather strike it, but
I'd rather strike it, okay, that's right. I'd vote to strike it, too, than Yiching.
Okay, any other comments or edits?
I have a comment on number three. On the second line, this is the public hearing. On the second line where it says CBD petition. I don't, do we know the petition number for that project? It just, it should be listed there, number Thank you, eighteen. So that would be the only change I have. Um, oh, I know, I have a, I have an edit on, on page three, under North Main Street, three A, update, second bullet. And the words Working Group should be replaced with Advisory Committee. And that's all I have.
Did we call it a working group at that time? It just goes down to what we actually said at the meeting.
I don't know what we said at the meeting, but I do know that this, the discussion was not about a working group. It was about the zoning review advisory committee.
Okay, so, um, okay, it says, it says this, so it is implied, it is definitely talking about the Z-RAD. So, okay, why don't we just call it this committee?
Great.
Did we call it a working group at that time? It just goes down to what we actually said at the meeting. And is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Carrie? Thank you, Carrie.
Or, or approve in for, by, what is it, approve in form? Because I wasn't at that meeting, so whichever is appropriate.
Whichever, I think
If you weren't there, then you can abstain.
Okay, great.
I'll abstain.
Okay, Yiching?
Um, yay. But I think, um, the council had said that the, the, the other, that Carrie can approve.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, Carrie, do you wish to change your vote?
I'm not approving the, the, the council's comment at the, um, oh, what was it? Like the, whatever, is saying that I would approve them by inform but not content. So as long as we have quorum and they get approved by people there, I'll abstain.
Ah, I see.
Okay, um, so I think we've had, I've asked everyone but myself, I think. So I, I say aye as well, so we have a four-zero-one vote. And we can move on to the next one, which is
Sally, you want to take over? Tuesday, September twenty-first. Any comments from anyone on the board?
Um, I had a question on page one, which is in the lower part of the page, the fourth bullet, where it says, have the two members of the ADU Working Group that had, that had identified this issue been contacted? And the answer was no. And my question is, should one of us talk to those two members, just to let them know?
Sure, I don't.
So that's not about the notes, really, right? So
Right, it just prompted a question, so maybe I should hold it. Otherwise, I have no edits.
I spoke with them in the first, in that conversation, and I, I can, I can reach out to them.
Okay. So I have no edits.
Um, if there are no further Sorry, brain is not working tonight.
So I move that the Planning Board approved the Tuesday, September twenty-one, meeting minutes.
And is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Yiching?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I haven't had a chance to read this. So we go on to the last one, please.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Yiching.
Oh, I just have one on the updates, um, under Ms. Scott, the number one, uh, the twenty-six hundred square foot lot. That's, that's an error. So I would rather it not be, if it would just scratch that out and just say the lot at Glenwood. I think it's twenty-eight hundred.
That, that sounds fine to me, either way. You said twenty-eight hundred when you gave your update.
I'd rather strike it, but
I'd rather strike it, okay, that's right. I'd vote to strike it, too, than Yiching.
Okay, any other comments or edits?
I have a comment on number three. On the second line, this is the public hearing. On the second line where it says CBD petition. I don't, do we know the petition number for that project? It just, it should be listed there, number
Eighteen.
Thank you, eighteen. So that would be the only change I have. Um, uh, oh, I know, I have a, I have an edit on, on page three, under North Main Street, three A, update, second bullet. And the words Working Group should be replaced with Advisory Committee. And that's all I have.
Did we call it a working group at that time? It's like, it just goes down to what we actually said at the meeting.
I don't know what we said at the meeting, but I do know that this, the discussion was not about a working group. It was about the Zoning Review Advisory Committee.
Okay, so, um, okay, it says, it says this, so it is implied, it is definitely talking about the Z-RAD. So, okay, why don't we just call it this committee?
Great, that would be, that would do. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments on this? If not, would someone please make a motion to approve the minutes? Could you scroll up, please, Taylor? I can't remember which day this was.
September twenty-sixth.
For, for the minutes for September twenty-sixth, as amended?
I move.
Is there a second, please?
Yicheng, do you know what the next steps are there?
I think the Select Board has to make a decision. But also, I think that there were talks about how the process didn't go through, maybe all it could have, including our board and seeing, having seen any of it really, the RFP or the proposals, and we didn't have, we weren't in, brought into the decision. And so that was one, another point to pause and to perhaps rethink this.
So the RFP was written, I think, a couple of years ago, and has only just recently been released. And I think we were involved, and I remember being involved with the discussions around the RFP with Brian. So there was perhaps some informal discussion with Planning Board, but it's a Select Board, it's a town property. So the actual RFP process goes through the state mandated venues or channels. So I don't, is there indication that it didn't go through those channels?
Um, I, there was some kind of legality point to it that I am not totally able to articulate. But the acceptance of it and it, it just didn't go through enough committees and boards for some reason is one point that, so therefore it needs to have a pause. And also another sort of offer from the Affordable Housing Trust is on the table to, to be, to handle that from now on.
So this, okay, I mean it's
So the hoping that the community, the CPA, Community Preservation Act, might be able to help with some of this and, and be kind of a new channel in how that the town does small, smaller developments for affordable housing.
Yeah, it's just the, the Planning Board has no role in this process technically. So I'm a little confused as to
Yeah, there was some kind of, some kind of state law portion that, that Mike Betancourt and John Serbi were more understanding of than I am. And that, that asked that it go through a little bit more vetting before it happened.
Okay. That's interesting. Um, I, I just noticed, I should shut up because we're getting, we still have minutes to approve.
Any other updates from anyone before we move the minutes? Okay, first, August twenty second, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone have any?
I have, I have one comment and no edits. So on page two, I had in my notes from our, last time we looked at these, that Yicheng was going to make some edits to the PB discussion bullets. Or maybe it was that she was going to set these up as FAQs on our
No, Nancy incorporated my, my comments in that.
Okay, okay, good. So then I have no edits or comments. Thank you, Yicheng.
Thank you, Nancy.
And Nancy.
Nothing for me.
So I guess it's either me or Sally who has to call for a vote, because I don't think Taylor can do that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
I'll move that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor, roll call vote, please. Nick?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Carrie.
Or, or approve in form by, what is it, approve in form? Because I wasn't at that meeting, so whichever is appropriate.
Whichever, I think
If you weren't there, then you can abstain.
Okay, great.
Okay, Yicheng?
Um, yay, but I think the council had said that the, the other, that Carrie can approve.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, Carrie, do you wish to change your vote?
I'm not approving the, the, the council's comment at the, oh, what was it, like the, whatever, is saying that I would approve them by inform but not content. So as long as we have quorum and they get approved by people there, I'll abstain.
Ah, I see.
Okay, um, so I think we've had, I've asked everyone but myself, I think. Um, so I, I say aye as well, so we have a four zero one vote. Uh, we can move on to the next one, which is Sally, you want to take over?
Tuesday, September twenty-first. Any comments from anyone on the board?
Um, I had a question on page one, which is in the lower part of the page, the fourth bullet, where it says, have the two members of the ADU working group that had, that had identified this issue been contacted? And the answer was no. And my question is, should one of us talk to those two members just to let them know?
Sure, I don't.
So that's not about the notes really, right?
Right, it just prompted a question, so maybe I should hold it. Otherwise, I have no edits.
I spoke with them in the first, in that conversation and I, I can, I can reach out to them.
Okay. So I have no edits.
Um, if there are no further, sorry, brain is not working tonight.
So I move that the Planning Board approved the Tuesday, September twenty-one meeting minutes.
And is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please. Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm gonna abstain because I haven't had a chance to read this. So, um, we go on to the last one, please.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Yicheng.
Oh, I just have one on the updates, um, under Ms. Scott, the number one, uh, at the twenty-six hundred square foot lot. At, that's an error. So I would rather it not be, if it would just scratch that out and just say the lot at Glenwood. I think it's twenty-eight hundred.
That, that sounds fine to me, either way. You said twenty-eight hundred when you gave your update.
I'd rather strike it, but
I'd rather strike it, okay, that's right. I'd vote to strike it too than Yicheng.
Okay, any other comments or edits?
I have a comment on number three. Um, on the second line, this is the public hearing, on the second line where it says CBD petition. I don't, I would, do we know the petition number for that project? It just, it should be listed there, number
Eighteen.
Thank you, eighteen. So that would be the only change I have. Uh, oh, I know, I have a, I have an edit on page three, under North Main Street, three A, update, second bullet. Um, and the words, working group should be replaced with advisory committee. And that's all I have.
Did we call it a working group at that time? It's like, it just goes down to what we actually said at the meeting.
I don't know what we said at the meeting, but I do know that this, the discussion was not about a working group, it was about the zoning review advisory committee.
Okay, so, um, okay, it says, it says this, so it is implied, it is definitely talking about the Z-RAD. So, okay, but if we just call it this committee?
Great, that would be, that would do, thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments on this? If not, uh, would someone please, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes? Could you scroll up, please, Taylor? I can't remember which day this was.
September twenty-six.
For, approve the minutes for September twenty-six as amended?
I move.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I will abstain, I haven't had a chance to read this, so, um, thank you all. We are smack dab at seven-thirty, which is, uh, the opening of our continued hearing on CBD eighteen with the Waterfield Lot. Um, so why don't we have a roll call vote to open this, please? Uh, Sally?
Open, yes.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Uh, Yicheng?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you very much. I am going to turn this over to Taylor to continue the show. Thank you.
Okay, so this, this evening, we have presentations and, and comments from our peer reviewers, Tool and Weston Sampson. Want to remind the, the board that at this time, the developers have not had sufficient time and to, to review these, these, these peer reviews. Some of the information that will be presented tonight is the first time that our developer will be hearing this as well. So we need to take that, that into consideration as we question um, the, the developer of their next steps, because they have not been able to sit down as a team to be able to, to, to review it. Both Tool and Weston Sampson will be giving verbal presentations. After each, we'll open up for questions for anyone on the board to, to ask the, the peer reviewers. Um, we also have, um, uh, Matt Schuman here with us tonight, our engineer. He's here for, for questions, however, just like developers, he hasn't had sufficient time to review all the documents either, so. Just want to point that out. Yes, Deidre?
Oh, I just, um, one of the things that we were hoping to have this evening was a first review, um, by Dennis Carlon, our design review, design consultant. But, uh, last week, there were some discuss, discussions, Taylor, you, you were in on these discussions with the fire department about access, um, which might lead to redo, some redesigns, and so it was thought appropriate to, um, ask Dennis Carlon to wait until those, any design was done, because otherwise he'd have to redo some of his work. So that's why we're not hearing from Dennis this evening.
Thank you. First, on our, our, our schedule, um, we do have presentation from, uh, from Tool. So we have Erica with here with us tonight. Should be able to unmute yourself.
Yep, um, thank you, Taylor. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Um, my name is Eric Wiedaboni, uh, Tool Design Group, um, a professional engineer, registered with the state of Massachusetts. Um, I've been tasked with a transportation peer review for the Waterfield Lot. Um, so specifically, um, I received the traffic impact and access study that was conducted by VHP for the project. Um, I really focused in on safety, pedestrian access, um, loading and deliveries, and transportation demand management around the site. Um, I also received the latest version of the site plan, um, which was submitted in June of twenty-twenty-three. Again, focusing in on pedestrian access, um, circulation, um, bicycle and vehicular parking on site. My findings, uh, were that both of these are specifically the, the traffic impact and access study, uh, was performed to industry and local standards. Um, everything appro, is appropriately measuring the transportation impacts of the project as it relates to the vehicular trips on the roadway network. Uh, when you hone in a little bit more, what you'll see is that the, the trips that they generate are actually overstated, in my opinion. Um, and I found this when I, I did the same review for the ten Converse Place and the two, uh, six fifty-four Main Street. Um, I believe that there is an overestimation of vehicular trips when you start thinking about the central business district and the appeal of living in the downtown of Winchester. Um, the, the census tract, when you look at all of Winchester for, um, utilization of vehicles for mobility, you're at about eighty-seven point five percent of trips are being done by vehicle. Um, I believe that number will be lower in the central business district. Um, all that to say, I believe that the impact analysis overstates the vehicular impacts, which I can get to those numbers real quick, and maybe potentially understates the amount of foot traffic that will come to the site, which, um, ultimately is a good thing, but we want to be thoughtful about pedestrian and bicyclist safety in that, in that instance. For the vehicular, um, on Waterfield Road, in the morning peak hour, which is how we typically measure these things, you've got about four hundred and five vehicle trips, um, on a given one-hour day during the week. Um, this project is looking to increase that by about nineteen vehicle trips in both directions, in and out. So that's about a four percent increase, which I again think is overstated. Um, in the evening, you've got fifteen hundred vehicle trips on Waterfield Road, which is about three times the volume. Um, and again, for the, for the, um, vehicle trips for this project, you're looking at about twenty. So that's about a one percent increase. That's pretty, um, pretty light impact, I would say, for vehicular movements, um, related to this project. Um, all that said, you are talking about, again, a more, a more dense, compact site. We need to be thinking about, you know, curb use and loading and access for abutters, things of that nature become more critical. Something that I'm looking to get more information on from the development team is related to how they're anticipating, uh, deliveries and loading to happen for the project. I did see that access for the abutters was laid out, they utilized a, a single unit truck, a thirty-foot truck to get in and out for the alley between kind of that, the deli building, the abutters to the, to the west. Um, but I didn't see where they're anticipating deliveries to happen for their project, specifically when you get to residential. You know, I think we all know, we're talking about Amazon deliveries and pickup, drop-off, Ubers, things like that. I'd like to see a little bit more about where they're going to be encouraging those things to take place. Um, I also didn't see specifically what type of bicycle rack, um, they are proposing. So I know that there are some bicycle racks, um, both in the basement and, um, on the first floor at the front. Um, some of those are hanging up, but, um, you know, these days, we've got a lot of people using e-bikes. Those are really heavy and hard to lift, want to make sure we're not only providing, um, racks that are taller, especially if you have more elderly residents and things of that nature. So I'd like to see a little bit more about the, the bike rack types that they're recommending. And also the, the specific bike parking count, I, I didn't find as well. Um, I also would prefer that the bike parking doesn't happen in the basement, that's sort of like, uh, less convenient, requires bicyclists to go down the ramp and navigate through a parking garage, you know, potentially more conflict points within the parking garage. I prefer that to be, um, on the first floor. In terms of, let's see, if there's anything else that I had on my list. Um, safety analysis, I didn't see any issues with that. Um, you know, the one, um, non-motorist crash that has occurred in the last few years was Church at Waterfield, which work has been done to improve, uh, sightlines and the RFP has gone in there. Um, and I haven't seen any other non-motorist or fatalities in the area, aside from that one. Um, however, uh, twenty-twenty data is now out, so I'd like to see an update on the safety analysis just to make sure that we have everything that we need to make a decision there. On that, um, I did make some recommendations that I'll put in my final report around material, ground material around the site. Um, specifically when you're thinking about sort of the, the back along the wooded area. Um, I could see that being an area where people want to walk and it's just kind of landscaped, I think it'll, I'm not a landscape architect, but I could see it, um, having some challenges growing anything back there, if it's kind of shaded. And, um, I think it'd be better if it's more well-lit and, um, and allowed for, for cut through to the train station on foot. Um, and some other access materials around, um, the alley between the abutters and the project. Um, you know, potentially having it be more of a curvaceous pavement, shared space and less of a, you know, less pavement. Um, I think that wraps up my specific comments. Um, I, I did let, um, Taylor and Matt Schuman know what my comments were this morning, and I look forward to finalizing these and providing them to the, the project team later this week. Thank you.
More open up, um, the option for, to the board to ask any questions that they may have. Deidre?
Uh, hi, Erica, thanks for that report. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions. I hadn't thought of e-bikes as being something you put in a bike rack, so obviously I'm behind the times. Um, do we need to worry about electric outlets as well for charging there?
Uh, yeah, that actually is going to end up in my report was the, a recommendation, you know, it's not required. Um, but I would, I would be encouraging and recommending, um, some access to outlets for, for e-bikes.
And then the other question is, you, you raised, um, the point about increased pedestrian traffic. Was part of your review looking at the proposed crossings and the, the sightlines where, the curb cut is, do you find that that is reasonable, or is there something more you think should be done there?
Um, yeah, they ran a sightline analysis for, for that area and, and it seemed appropriate. I actually don't have access currently to the MBTA plans to ensure that, um, nothing is changing kind of under the bridge when you're looking, you're like leaving the site, looking right down Waterfield toward Mystic Valley Parkway. I want to make sure there's nothing impeding that. Um, but in terms of the design, they put in curb extensions on both sides that align with the parking, which is a really good, um, layout there. Uh, there is a kind of hashed out marked area to the west of the curb extension on the, on the site side where the new crosswalk is going in. And I, um, and part of my comments will be, I want to make sure that people aren't like live parking there and creating a, a sightline issue for that crosswalk, but aside from that, um, I think, I'm really happy to see that crosswalk go in, and I think curb extensions will have a huge benefit.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I had a question, um, about the public parking um, and how that would be connected to the deli and then where the old, uh, La Patisserie restaurant was. And also, um, h- h- how much the public parking would be, like, how would that all work? Um, for, for people that would be coming in to patronize those businesses? Maybe get coffee or whatnot?
Uh, I guess I'm a little unclear, what you, what do you mean by how it interacts and how it would work?
Well, the, well, there's public parking, how, how would that be connected to those businesses? And, and then, um, supposedly there, there was some talk about the, I guess there'd be a fee for public parking? That would, that would be interesting to know how much that would be. And, and also to, I mean, how are people going to get from the public parking to those businesses?
Yeah, I mean, uh, so in terms of circulation, people on foot, um, some of that public parking is kind of surface and then some of it goes into the parking garage. Um, that will be probably slightly less convenient than it is now, because you're inside of a building and you need to get out of the building. Um, and there's limitations in the number of access points, so they're going to come down, you know, come down to the, I guess, the, towards the tracks and then walk along the, the two sidewalks on both sides that are being provided. So that's the, that's how that's going to circ, circulate, then you'll have to walk up Waterfield. Or that's partly why I was talking about the, um, recommendations around ground materials around the building. Um, I do think people are kind of, people will move in the shortest distance between two points and, you know, people are walking here every day. And I think they're going to probably want to walk around the building to get to some of the businesses on the back on Church Street, and they'll be able to do that if the, if those, those materials are laid out in a, in an appropriate fashion for people on
So, so I guess there'd be permeability questions, uh, from an architectural standpoint, is, is it permeable enough to allow people to walk from the parking through the structure to the businesses on Church Street? Uh, a, access from the back and that, I mean, that would be certainly something to think about.
Well said, and yes, I, there is, uh, less permeability than there is today, that is, that is sure, which I think can have a safety benefit, because you can kind of control where people are walking a little bit. Um, but you also want to strike that balance of having it be, you know, convenient and thoughtful. Terms of the, um, the charging for parking, I am not sure about, um, where that stands.
So I have a comment in response to Nick's question. I seem to remember, and I, it's not clear in my mind, but there was a discussion um, at some point about providing garage pedestrian exit doors and exit and entrance doors on, um, perhaps, uh, I guess it would be, I don't know how to say it, probably, well, it would be on the, the Church Street side of the building, I seem to remember. And given that we're looking at, um, a requirement to do some re, um, view of the design, maybe that's something that can be incorporated into that. Um, so that, that people do have a chance to exit the building to the Church Street side. Um, but I, that was a, it, uh, it's not a firm memory that I have about that, so maybe it was just a conversation.
Do we want to bring in the developer to maybe comment on that?
And, and we, we certainly can, I do want to, want to interject again, just reminding everyone that the developer hasn't had the opportunity to review everything, so we do need to be mindful. The developer may not be able to have all the answers that, that we have today, yeah. But Sam, if you would like to chime in, please, please do.
Okay, uh, okay.
Yeah.
Is the question specifically about pedestrian access on the Church Street side of the building?
That's what I, yeah, what I heard was have, um, ensuring that there's access from part, public parking amenity to, to the abutters, um, which I think is the concern, is having some permeability, so they're not kind of walking too secure to sleep.
Yeah, so I, I think we have looked at adding a, um, a door from the, o- o- on the plan, it would be sort of in the top right-hand corner of the garage. Uh, and it comes out in the alley, uh, behind, um, the abutters. Um, so there, there would be an access door there. Um, but as far as the public sort of cutting through to Church Street, I don't know how appropriate that would be, because they'd have to go through the abutters' private property, so. Um, we haven't looked into that.
Well, they would, they, they would have to get from the public parking to Church Street. So maybe there would be a door, uh, I mean, from the public parking to the side of the building in the parking lot that would allow them to do that, I, I don't know.
Um, maybe, maybe we can bring up a plan here.
There is a proposed kind of piece of sidewalk there, so that kind of aligns with what you said, Sam, in terms of providing a, a door there. There are just, I think there's three sets of little stairs back there, so I think we're trying to, trying to make it so that we're not, you know, making this too circuitous for it to be convenient for, for users.
Yeah, there, so there are, um, there's pedestrian access to some stairs that are existing, and I think they'll be sort of reconfigured. But those, I think those are mainly just accessing the buildings uh, in the rear. Um, but as far as like pedestrians cutting through to Church Street, I, you know, that's a different story.
Well, cut, not cutting through it, cutting from where they parked their car at Church Street. Not, not just cutting through. Is that, i- i- I mean, is it? Are you, are you making a distinction, like, this is my question?
Nick, it's all, it's all private property between this, this land and then Church Street. Right, so there's no right of way for the public to pass through.
That is correct, and, and perhaps I should not have mentioned the words Church Street. What I meant to say was that if there was a pit, a, a public parking exit and entrance door on the side of the building that Sam was just talking about, so that they could not have to walk around the building through the main entry, um, to the garage, um, to get to any place that is on the opposite side of the building is what I meant. So there's, there's back doors to many of the businesses, um, that are abutters, and these people would have the opportunity to walk in, out, out a back door of the first level parking garage and into a back door of one of the businesses. I wasn't trying to say that we should make
Right, is, is that a, is that a problem? For, I guess, the, uh, private property, uh, perspective?
I would think they would be glad.
So it would essentially be maintaining the existing access from the public parking lot to the rear entrances of the buildings on Church and Waterfield. So I, I think that There's no private property issue because as you're trying to get to the rear entrances, which they've allowed in the past. So it's just a question of how do you get them there safely without having to? And I think, Sam, your solution of putting a door near the alleyway, which is close to the stairs which lead up, I think to the back of. The Church Street building would be similar access to what they have now. As long as they don't mind dodging all the trash cans, so.
So this is Taylor Bearden speaking from Civico, so we, we have detailed uh, that to some extent. Based on how the elevation of the proposed uh, building compares to the pre-existing elevation of the backyard of the. Church Street parcels. And so we can just make sure at a later meeting, whenever it be appropriate, that we go over that again. Because at last review, we reviewed it with the abutter and with uh, members of the town administration, but I'm not sure that has been reviewed. In this company.
Yeah, I think that when, when you folks come up with your full response to um, Erica's report, we can go into that in a lot more detail.
Carrie. Uh, can I ask a kind of transportation one-on-one or uh, transportation analysis one-on-one question, which is. You are doing this analysis based on the proposed parking, I think it was like point eight spaces per unit, is that right?
Um, the analysis on the kind of trip generation related to what, a number of vehicles that the site will.
Right.
Yeah, so the way that trip generation is done is actually also conservative, which essentially assumes that there is an unlimited amount of. Parking supply on a site, um, because the, the numbers are kind of coming from. Counting all over the, all over the country and um, just counting at a driveway of an, of another, you know, sixty unit building to see what they've generated. Compiling hundreds of them, so it really doesn't consider the fact that, again, this urban setting that you have. In urban that maybe is a little strong, uh, but a more, you know, densely populated environment where maybe not everyone is relying on a vehicle every day. This also is like, you know, free, some people working from home and uh, you know, all that kind of other stuff. So this is pretending that there's a ton of parking on site and that they, everyone could own a vehicle and drive whenever they wanted, and that's really not how it is. When you look at the, the daily generation that this projects, I also think that's overestimated. It's got um, a hundred and twenty vehicles going in and a hundred coming out every day. That's two per unit, so that would be each car that you have on site coming in and out twice, and I just don't see that happening.
And if we include, i- is it two, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, does it, do we get to two cars per unit total for spaces? If we include the public parking?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, okay, so you're rounding, you're rounding pretty far up here.
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you, that's really helpful, I appreciate it.
Just around two, sorry, uh, hundred and nineteen, I pulled it up, hundred and nineteen on site. Um, but it's not uh, you know, four, it looks like forty-eight will be, or, oh, sorry, seventy-one will be for public use. And forty-eight will be for the, for the building.
And all of the building spaces are inside and covered, so snow emergent, like snow things are not an issue, there's no, we don't. I'm, I'm thinking about what people who have two cars per unit but only a point eight allotment for their car would do if it snowed and they're on the street. But the public parking would hypothetically be available. Doesn't sound like you a problem, thank you.
You drink.
Um, uh, thank, thanks for, for the analysis, I, I was a little bit surprised that um, the morning traffic is. Four oh five versus evening traffic fifteen hundred, because I, I'm more familiar with sort of the school, going to school traffic, um. And it gets really intense, so what is the sociology behind that, that like three times more in the evening and what, what hours are those? Just curious.
Um, so yeah, I was actually up in uh, Winchester earlier today, um, and I happened to do a site walk of around this area right around. Uh, I think it was around three o'clock and it's uh, it's something.
Yes.
So they actually counted um, seven to nine AM in the morning and then um, three to six PM in the evening. So they extended it out a little bit to make sure they got the school traffic. And actually, the peak hour, I believe, out of the three to six was four forty-five to five forty-five. So even though you get that big rush after school, that's probably like a fifteen minute thing versus like the full hour from four forty-five to five forty-five is longer. Um, turns to sociology, that's an interesting question, I think, um, you know, people have different schedules and not everyone's doing the nine to five crunch. So, you know, uh, people, you know, if the kids are getting out of school and then you're kind of running around doing errands or. You're leaving for the day, you're going out to dinner, um, kind of people are bopping around doing their errands and activities, I think in the afternoon more than, you know, at seven to nine is really kind of.
There's so many sports events.
Sorry, go ahead.
There's so many sports events in school and theater and things like that at that location.
Wake at that hour.
Yeah, so um, you said the, the more dangerous part was that at the Waterfield and Church. That, that one fatality was, was awful, um, the, the um, cross-section between MVP and um, with. Waterfield, that, that node, node, is that too far for the study or it has that sort of, is that? Has that been looked at and is that safe enough for all the children and all the parents going in, out and all people?
Um, so yeah, that was part of the study, they actually basically studied Waterfield Road end to end. Um, and when looking at the crashes, the crash occurrence, um, over the three-year period that they studied. Church at Waterfield experienced four crashes in the three years and Waterfield at Mystic Valley Parkway also experienced four crashes in the three years. Um, and while I don't want any crashes to take place, these are um, well below kind of the um. The crash rate for the average crash uh, occurrence at an intersection in the state, that doesn't mean that we don't want to do better. Um, but they are well below kind of that crash rate, which is essentially calculated number of vehicles entering an intersection. Over the course of a day, kind of divided by the number of crashes that take place in the, in the year. Um, so they are lo- below the sta- the kind of average there, they didn't have any non-motorist aside from that one fatality. Um, there were no fatal, fatal injuries at any of these um, locations. So that all told me that there wasn't like a major pattern of uh, of, of, of safety concern there. At the end of the day, both of those intersections actually were redone and have, you know, wrapped flashing beacons now, so they're better than they were.
That's great, I, I also really um, am grateful for the thoughtful, um. Thoughtful comments about bikes and the increase in bike and, and pedestrian activity at that node. Because there, there is so little housing in that location and all of a sudden there will be quite a lot of people living and using non-vehicular. Ways of travel, um, and I, I, I like the bike racks at ground level would be. Uh, very excellent um, sort of change here, but also looking at the sidewalk here, just thinking about all the people that are using bikes and. Um, and walking that, that narrow sidewalk between the, the driveway and the parking seems. Not to differentiate pedestrians from bikers, and so that, that was, that's a little concerned, if that's too narrow a way. If there could be a differentiation between the two modes of, of travel. Um, as well as, you know, going towards the, the bike, bike trail, which is such a, such, such a amenity to that area. Um, that, that node at Waterfield is, is very confusing on where it goes to, to connect to the further to the bike trail and so if that. Would somehow be tweaked so that this, this is a little bit more um, strategic. Um, and, and acknowledges the increase in, in um, non-motor vehicles.
Um, yeah, I, I just on, on the, on the site driveway and the differentiation of the spaces there. Um, it is a really pretty tight spot between um, you know. The feasibility of being able to construct a building and, and the abutments of the train. And to get that parking in and get sidewalks on both sides, you're really like, in the drive aisle, that's appropriate, you're really like. Dealing with a lot of different challenges there, I think in terms of the number of, the, the volume we're expecting to see here for cars. It's a pretty comfortable, it's very comfortable space for a person on a bike to, to ride in, in the lane on the driveway there. Um, I'm, I don't have a lot of concern for that, um, I do think that being more thoughtful about how to connect to the greenway, um, is important.
Any other questions for this team?
I, I do have one, Taylor, um, um, will it be necessary for you to? Review design revisions and modify your study? Or do you have to wait and see?
Uh, I anticipate continuing my review until all comments are, are satisfied, so yes, I'm looking forward to the next, the next round.
Okay, great, thank you.
We have no other comments. We'll move on to our next peer reviewer. Oh, great, all right, thank you very much, Erica, really appreciate it, um, for all of your, all of your work. Uh, we really appreciate working with you, um, thank you. Um, for our next uh, review, we have uh, Weston Sampson. Um, please let uh, I, I believe that we would, we're gonna have uh, either Sam or Taylor. Um, speak first about the work of Weston Sampson, is that, you, are you comfortable with that?
Um, I, we had not prepared a presentation for tonight, um, because we haven't received any comments yet, um, but. Let me just ask uh, Mike Laham from Horstley Witten Group, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
Did, did you have any opening comments before we get into the peer review?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Yep. No comments.
Okay, great, so Weston Simpson, I know that we um, we talked this morning about um, what is. Like, we would like uh, you all to, to share with us tonight, um. And any comments as, as, as little or as, as much that you could provide would be greatly appreciated tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, um, my name is Drew Schwartz, I'm with Weston and Sampson, um, thank you to the board for having me here tonight. Um, so yeah, I'm just gonna, I guess, just to kind of backtrack on where we're currently at with our review. Um, so we actually met on Friday with the town and with the project team, so representatives from Civico and Horstley Witten Group. And we did kind of go over, provide a general overview of our comment. Uh, you know, at this time, I don't think there's anything that we're noticing that's, you know, insurmountable in terms of moving the project forward. Uh, so we haven't actually compiled our comments, I guess, into a formal document at this point, that's still kind of ongoing. Uh, and so it was our intention to finish that and then confer with the town on our comments to go back and forth to kind of finalize that document. Uh, before it would go before, you know, Horstley Witten and Civico for, you know, for a response. Um, but no, I'm happy to provide kind of a very high-level um, commentary on some of our, kind of some of our more major comments. Um, so I can kind of, I guess, walk through that with you, so again, we. Were tasked with looking at the stormwater, the sewer and the water design as part of this project, I believe you also asked us to look at the landscaping plan as well. Uh, so we engage with various parties on our um, design team to complete those reviews. Um, I guess in terms of the stormwater design, um, you know, we'd like to see updates made to the stormwater sizing calculations. To utilize the rainfall data required by the Winchester Stormwater Rules and Regulations. Um, we requested that the applicant resubmit their groundwater recharge um, calculations to demonstrate compliance with the Winchester Stormwater Rules and Regulations. Um, we'd also like to see updates uh, made to the submitted phosphorus calculations to more accurately reflect current and proposed plan uses. Um, we also would like to see additional groundwater monitoring data. Um, to support the proposed design, at this point, there's only one groundwater observation that was submitted. Um, to support the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation used in the design, uh, which we feel may not accurately reflect conditions at the site. Um, we'd like to see test pits performed in the proposed um, stormwater BNP locations prior to construction. Um, potentially during the demolition phase, um, basically to confirm the soil types used in the design. Um, basically, the current design uses the raws rates for infiltration based on the geotechnical borings, um, which should be confirmed prior to construction. Um, I guess just moving on quickly on the sewer side of things. Uh, we noted that an additional detail should be added to the plan showing how the proposed sewer service will connect to the MWRA main on the site. Um, we also want to, want a detail kind of showing how the existing service will be plugged, that existing service connection. Um, we also noted the need for MWRA to basically have the final say on all construction activities within their easement. Including the sewer connection and roof drains, um, which are proposed across the easement. Um, on the water design, uh, we do agree with basically the proposed looping of the water main on Waterfield Road. Uh, we're recommending that two flow tests be performed prior to final design to provide insight on pressures and flows. Um, in the Waterfield Road area, um, we're recommending, at this point, we're assuming those tests probably need to be performed prior to November fifteenth, so. Uh, would like to see those kind of scheduled, if those plan to move forward. Um, and then lastly, I guess, just on the, kind of conveying some thoughts from our um, landscape architect. Um, with respect to the landscaping plan that was presented, um, we'd like to see a little bit more species diversity in some of the planting areas. Um, considering the benefits of intermixing and adding more low shrub options um, to the planting areas. Uh, we also thought that additional clumps of planting could, plantings could be added to the mulch area bordering the building. Um, although we understand that obviously from an emergency access standpoint, that may not always be um, feasible, but something we're hoping they could look at. As well, um. It's just maybe some larger spacing um, of the grow low plantings to allow for horizontal root growth and massing. Uh, and then just that the plants proposed next to the building could be provided deeper volume for root development. Um, which would also help mitigate leaf scorch of plants closer to the brick surface of the building. Um, so that was kind of a high-level kind of summary of some of our comments, but again, like I said. Still kind of in the process of completing our review, um, although I will say that all of these comments were discussed with the, with the design team on Friday.
Thank you very much, I know it's a lot of, a lot of technical uh, stuff for the um. For some of us not technical people to, to understand, but we really appreciate um, appreciate the, the work. Does anyone on the board have any questions? No comments, Sally.
I have sort of a professional practice, higher-level question for um. Stormwater review practices, especially since we're seeing every uh, month at least around the globe. The skies letting loose with what, much more inches per hour than has been historically the standard around the world. Um, and I, the New York is an example, their system was designed to handle one point five inches per hour. And in most places that flooded, it was well over three or four inches an hour that fell, so. I'm not saying that's gonna happen in Winchester, it's just happening around the world and I want to know from a professional practice point of view, if stormwater. Peer review and stormwater standards are being discussed to be increased with regards to inches per hour of rainfall?
Um, yes, I would absolutely say that is definitely on the state's radar, we've been waiting for a long time right now for an updated stormwater handbook. From the state that's supposed to reflect um, those, you know, storms that are occurring with increased intensities. Um, and durations, um, so that communities can reference those design standards appropriately. Um, and so that's something that's kind of been, um, you know, something that's been in the process for probably a couple of years now and it seems like it's. Been imminent for public comment, but um, you know, we haven't seen anything released yet, so on that front. Uh, right now, that, you know, the town's stormwater regulations reference um, the Parnell data for precipitation. Uh, and so that is probably, I mean, I guess, we can talk about how that's slightly less conservative, I think, than. What um, Horstley Witten's and Civico's um, design was based on, the NOAA Atlas fourteen data at this point.
Right, okay, I just, I, it, it, it's just a, as I said, it was sort of a professional practice uber question in the light of the news. Um, so I appreciate that, that the design team. Um, and the peer reviewer for stormwater and the engineering department in the town. Would be mindful of the upward curve of, of rainwater per hour coming into our uh, previous surfaces. That's all I have.
Yeah, no, definitely, that's a great comment, absolutely, and, and definitely with the unprecedented rainfall that, you know, like you mentioned, that's happening in recent months.
So for the landscape um, review, I understand that the area of the ground area for any kind of landscaping is very small. Um, but there were a couple of rooftops. Um, but there were a couple of rooftop patios. Um, that were spaces for collective gathering and things like that, and I, I just wonder if that. Any sort of landscaping on that kind of, uh, those surfaces, which are a lot bigger. And they are, you know, horizontal and, and sort of can, can add to diversity and even biodiversity or, um. Uh, is that, is that part of the review at all? And is it, it, could it be somehow incorporated or beneficial to, um, just. Helping that, that area sort of be a little bit more alive?
Yeah, I mean, more like a green roof type of design, if we could look at that.
I think so, or even the, just sort of the plantings that are, that are up there, um, that, that aren't sort of. You know, non-native or non-productive or, or, you know, things that don't really add to the biodiversity of. Bugs and trees and, uh, bugs and, um, birds and, you know, things like that. Is that, is that kind of the scope or, or is that excluded?
Um, we can certainly look at that. I mean, right now, we were just looking at what was actually proposed, you know, as part of the landscaping plan. But that's something certainly we can take, take a look at and see if, um, something like that would be feasible, and I don't know. You know, if that's been looked at at all, as part of the design to date by the design team.
I can give a quick update on that. We don't have any detailed designs for the upper terrace yet, but, uh, it is something we're starting to look into. And I think we've had our. We've asked our landscape architect to start coming up with some sort of precedent images for what, what that might look like. Um, so that, so that we could share those with the board at a future meeting.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions from board?
Yes, just one follow-up question. So because all of this is happening very quickly and, um, the Civico team hasn't. Had a chance to look at the stuff and the design is shifting and you'll be reevaluating your recommendations. I'm assuming that all of this is an ongoing and fluid process that we're in the middle of right now, is that right?
Yes, absolutely. And we'll, you know, like I said, we're expecting to get our comments back, um, to the town by the end of this week, early next week at the latest. Um, and then, but yeah, so that we'd be looking to get a response from the design team. And then I'm sure we'll respond potentially with some additional questions, and there'll be some additional meetings and back and forth as well to result, make sure all issues are resolved.
Okay, so we look forward to hearing more and seeing the specifics and. Hearing the design team's response. That's great.
Deanne?
Particular questions to ask. I was wondering if Matt Schuman, town engineer, had any comments he wanted to make at this point?
I, I don't have any specific comments. We've been working with the peer, both peer reviewers to review the plans. And their comments and then interacting with the developer, uh, the dev, design team, so, you know, we. I think as Drew said, mentioned, there's, we haven't seen any, any, you know, uh. Showstoppers or anything like that. They all seem like comments that can be, um, uh, thought through and, and resolved.
That's great news. That's, that's the reassuring language I like to hear. Thank you.
Okay, I also want to open it up to anyone on the development team. If you want to ask any questions. Feel free to do so. If not, totally fine, not, not, not expected to.
Um, I don't have any questions.
Great. All right, well, we'll, um, we don't have a absolute plan, um, for what we can expect at our. At our next public hearing, which will be. October twenty-fourth, uh, but we will be working with, uh, with everyone involved to make sure that this, uh, process can. Continues. Um, and we will be updated on that as we go. Um, so if we have no other que, other questions, I'd like to thank Weston Sampson Development Group, uh, for joining us this evening. And, uh, we'll forward to seeing more comments and, and more of your work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
We do have time for public comments, so.
Yep. So to, to open up a public comment, um. I will say, I just want to let everyone know that the sustain, sustainability department has submitted their. Their comments on the project. You can read that, um, on the website. And we will be reviewing it in more detail in next meeting. This was received fairly late in. Week after the agenda and everything was made. So if anyone in, uh, public is interested in reading it or anyone on the board, it is on our. Our website and we'll go into more detail next time we meet. So at this time, I'd like to open up. The opportunity for any member of the public to ask any questions. Okay, I would say that that is no, no questions. Please, please know that, uh, if you do have any questions. You can email planningboard@winchester.us or you can email myself, therman@winchester.us. Uh, to either get more information, ask questions, or anything else about this project. So with that, uh, Sally or Deanne, want to rep, wrap up this se- section, please?
Um, yeah, we need to, um, set a time for the continuation of the hearing. Um, so it's a little different in two weeks because in two weeks we have a, um. The North Main Street CBD three A zoning review advisory committee. Um, presentation at seven. So, um, the idea is that we would have that from seven till eight. And that we would start our meeting at eight o'clock. So I think that, um, we should probably move this, continue this hearing on October twenty-fourth at eight fifteen. Um, if there's a motion to that, I would love it to have a motion to continue this hearing until October twenty-fourth at eight fifteen.
I can move. Sorry. Oh, good.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote, please, um, Eeching?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And I say a as well.
Great.
And I will, it's all, it's all you and Sally from now on, Taylor.
Great, thanks, Deanne.
Thank you again. Thank, thank you again, everyone. Um, also thank you again to our town engineer, Matt Schuman. Uh, for helping us out this evening. Um, moving on to our. Next piece. On the agenda, the MBTA three A Communities Compliance North Main Street Design Guidelines.
Would, do you want me to take that from here?
Yes, please.
So, um. I think the, um, the important, two important points that we want to cover tonight. Um, is the upcoming public meeting dates and, um, the constitution, the seating of a, of a zoning review advisory. Committee. Um, and with regards to the public meeting dates and Taylor, please tell me if I get this wrong. Um, but the next, um, sort of. Uh, informational meeting about, um, and for the benefit of those interested in serving on the zoning review advisory committee is on. Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. And just as the first ZERAC meeting focused on, um. Um, the zoning changes that, um, the planning board seeks to make in the, um, GBD two and three. The next ZERAC meeting, number two, on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, will include one of our consultants focusing on the, um. The, the whole. Three A, uh, legislation and the requirements for zoning, um, that, that that imposes on every MBTA community. And how, how Winchester and specifically will be incorporating zoning changes into their bylaw. Um, so that's that meeting, bylaws plural, on the twenty-fourth. Um, and then I, is it correct, um, Taylor, that we're still planning a community meeting on October thirty-first?
That would be November second. We were planning a, a community meeting.
Oh, that's right, November second, thank you.
Second at seven P M.
And that will be, um, also, both of these will be virtual, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, not like renting a space from the junks or anything like that. So, um, that's great. So everybody can make do note of those, um, um, the three A subject and the zoning subject is a complicated bucket. And, um, we're grateful that as many people have expressed an interest in, in participating in the zoning review advisory committee. As we have, at my count, I think we had, um. I had it written down at one point, seven or more people that have expressed an interest in serving on this committee. And I believe that their applications are in our packet, the revised packet that Taylor sent out just before the meeting, which I appreciate you doing. And, uh. So I think that the, we see, the, the procession of the meeting at this point would be that we would look over those applications. Um, Deanne and Taylor, is that what you have in mind?
Well, do, do you have as a question?
Out that, um, we're also, the planning board is going to be presenting, uh, the three A. Progress and, and status at the select board meeting on the, um.
Thirtieth.
The, the thirtieth, thank you. Oh, that's right, it got moved, we get a little extra time.
From Oc, Oc, that's October thirtieth.
That's correct.
That's correct. Great, that's excellent.
So I did think, so it, it is a. In terms of what we want to do with, uh. Applications that we have in hand, I think it's, it, if we take a look at it, we do want to move, um, I think somewhat quickly to get people. Acknowledged, that, you know, to appoint them so that they can start focusing on material. And, and, and contacting, um, you know, Taylor in particular, but anyone on the planning board to understand. Um, the three A, um, stuff going forward. I think we're still waiting, the, the board at our last meeting. Talked about the need to include, uh, members from design review and historical. And I think we're waiting on, uh, decisions from those boards as to who they might, um, appoint as, as a, a member of our group.
We, we've reached out to them and, uh, invited, invited them or.
Yes, I, I mentioned yesterday. I, I, I shared yesterday with one of the members of design review that, that Deanne has requested that both of those boards. Vote a member to represent them on the ZERAC. And if a special needing, met, special meeting on Zoom for fifteen minutes is required, that will be a great thing for them to do. As, um, we have to keep on a pretty rigorous calendar schedule with this whole project. So there, I, yeah.
Taylor reached out last week as well, I believe.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll just be a, a, a little bit of overlap. So just know that there will be a representate, uh, representation from both committees, boards. And, uh, but we don't know who, who, who that's going to be today.
Right.
Agreed.
Well, I think if we were to go over our applicants this evening.
I'd love to do that. I'm so pleased that people have risen to the occasion.
I think we have everybody except for our first applicant.
How many, uh?
Is that correct? Taylor?
Eeching? Um, I think there might be two missing. I think there might be two missing because I got one just an hour before or a few hours before. Right here, you don't have this yet.
Okay, that's helpful.
I think I put it in the meeting, in the meeting, um. The calendar invite, but. Um, I think, I think they're all here, and if, 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 if anyone disagrees or sees someone missing, let me know and I'll pull it up.
I, I didn't see Hank Lynn in the packet, but I saw him on, on, on your screen, so.
Yeah, that just came in.
Okay, great.
In, yeah. So how many do we have? If we can just quickly run through the names.
How many do we need now? I, I mean, are we, uh, are we still sticking to five?
We, we said, we, we said we would have.
We see balloons.
Why are you doing that?
Candidates. That's great.
I don't, that was weird. Sorry.
We started out saying that we would have five people on this review committee with the addition of, of, um. Appointed members from two boards, that's seven, and I remember seeing input from our design. Or, or, or consulting team that, um, zoning review advisory committees can be even as large as nine or eleven. So we can decide as a board, um, I think, even though we stated five. That, um, based on, um, the qualifications and the scope of the project and so on, that we can have more if we want more.
So I think.
Well, we're starting with, we're starting with five as a kind of.
Seven.
So, so why don't we, I think tonight, why don't we go through this and figure, I think we all want to invite them to come and interview with the board. I think, look, just looking at the resumes might not be sufficient, so maybe we can look at the resumes tonight and decide who we would like to come and, and, and talk with the board. If we want to talk to all of them, that would be great.
I, I would like to make sure that we pay attention to their addresses because I think anyone that's in a neighborhood that's affected should, in spite of their resume, be invited. I think it's really important to have very local input.
We kind of have, just, just as a heads up, we kind of have scattered. Information from each, not everyone submitted a resume, not everyone submitted a letter of interest, but everyone did do the committee volunteer application. Just, just letting everyone, everyone know. So if, if you do see someone who is interesting, you believe is interesting. I mean, I think that we could use this as an opportunity to ask for more information.
Taylor, because of these, these, um, if, these applications are like separately, just scattered a, a, in.
Yep.
Like three, at least three or four to places. Can we just get one packet? Maybe.
This, this is.
Yeah, the problem is that they just keep coming in.
Can we just put a stop to it and just, because we didn't get the first two and then we did, we just got one that's not included in the pack. So at least three aren't included in here.
It's just. What first two are not included? I'm confused about that.
There was this, a recent grad from Brown who applied, that was his first application, it's not in here.
Really? Wow, okay.
Um, okay.
And then Hank Glenn isn't in here. Just so that we, we ha, we can see everyone.
Great, I thought that was what we had, um, but having not specified a cutoff date, it's, it's, um.
Well, technically, we. Yeah, so technically we had specified a cutoff date and I don't think we got any applicants.
Yep, that's correct.
Oh, I see, so we extended it and, and then more people became interested.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think part of the problem is we don't have a cutoff date now. Maybe we should, we should put one in. Um, but we have, um. Taylor, are you reviewing this to make sure we have them all? Is that what you're doing?
I am. Yep, just give me one second, please.
So my thought is, we have about. You know, nine with the design review and historical commission, um, appointees. And it's, it's such a fast-paced sprint here. Is it, is it problematic if we invited all of them? And then?
No.
No, and then have, you know, see who shows up to all the meetings and, and has. Can, can, you know, contribute what they can and.
Oh, I see.
Just take a sprint.
Well, I would love to have them come in and talk to us. To interview with us, so we understand their motivation and to make sure they understand that they, you know. They need to appear at all of these meetings. I think if they don't feel like they can, if they don't understand the level of, of, um.
Interest.
Yeah, that, that, you know, we don't want people to drop out in the mid, in mid-cycle because it ruins that, all of the knowledge they've gained. So hold on a sec. It looks like Ellen Spencer from Design Review is trying to get in. There she is.
Uh, so teaching I I have seven individuals here. Which one do you believe is missing?
The first one that you ever sent us was this this brown red who is who talked about being sort of a younger representation representative.
Yeah, I I I remember that.
Let me see if I can find that. What was the name? Do you remember? Do do anybody?
Tommy.
Okay, he's 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 in. He's in here.
Good. So what I would suggest at this point is that we take a few minutes to look at who's applied and get a sense of their what they would bring to the the project. And also that we set a cutoff date and also that we schedule a date to invite applicants to the advisory committee to come and meet with us. And it may require a special planning board meeting because our planning board meetings are getting really chalk a block complicated and full. So that's that's what I would suggest. And perhaps we can start with a with a quick look through the the applications. But before we do that, Ellen Spencer's here. She's chair of the design review committee.
Um, Taylor, we've got phone numbers and we should take off the phone numbers and the email addresses. We can't show these. Sorry. We've got too much personal identifiable information on here.
Should we hold on the review of the candidates until we set a deadline and 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 then have a complete set? I see a a nodding head in my Brady Bunch window.
I I would suggest that we.
I don't know how many of you sort of sat with the applications, but I I just briefly glanced at them. I didn't really sit through and and just sort of mark what was significant about each one.
Well, so let's let's set a date then that we can invite them to come and present to us. And before that, we set a date to cut off applications. Grateful that at the last minute, for instance, Hank Lynn has come in because we didn't set one. And there may be other people who are engaged and knowledgeable and have great expertise to value to to provide value to us. So can can we do that?
And I suggest then that we 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 have a deadline at the end of this week and that we have a interviews starting next week. I know it's an off week for the planning board, but that would allow us to continue with our normal cadence of meetings.
I would be in favor of a cutoff on October thirteenth and the town hall closes at noon that day. So it would be by noon on Friday, October thirteen.
Rest of the board feel like that's a reasonable cutoff?
Or if it if we can do Thursday evening and then by noon Suzanne can put up a packet for us.
Ah.
Yeah. We do that?
Yes, that makes sense because Suzanne will not be able to do a packet after noon on Friday. So so the deadline is close of business on Thursday, the twelfth.
And is that five P M?
Uh, I think that as long as, yeah, let's do five P M.
Right. On on Thursday, October twelfth. And then do you have your proposing that we schedule a planning board meeting specifically to interview candidates on Tuesday, the seventeenth? Is that correct?
Yes. And if a Z B A petition slips, if a Z B A petition slips in there, it just might. But let's yeah, specifically just to do the candidates interviews.
And to keep the ball rolling.
Yeah. Is that going to be a full meeting until nine forty five?
No, no, no. I you know, if we have, let's say we have seven, eight people. If we allot five minutes per, we're at whatever eight times five is these days.
Forty.
So let's do an hour. Let's say that we meet from from seven thirty until eight forty five or nine o'clock, just at the latest.
Oh, I see. Right. With because you're also in case we have another
if we want to, you know, five minutes for discussion, plus we want to have a discussion amongst ourselves. So an hour and a half meeting. That's my suggestion.
That sounds right to me.
An hour of of interviews and half an hour deliberation would be great.
Yeah. Can we have it start at seven fifteen or?
We can have it start whenever you'd like. Seven fifteen, if that's what the people want.
Well, I I don't know.
Seven fifteen is well, okay. I mean, it's just it's the regular time.
Yeah, just the regular time, seven fifty. Okay, so we'll have a meeting at seven fifteen. Um, next next, whatever it is Tuesday.
And in the meantime, Taylor, perhaps you can, as new names come in, you can just kind of send a rolling update list to us. Is that a feasible thing to do? Like, if we can see in our packet the names of all of the people. And if another one comes in, just, well, maybe that's unnecessary. We'll just keep track and we'll look for the packet on the on the on the on the thirteenth.
Why don't we? We could just use a Dropbox and then just Taylor, if you just use the Towns Dropbox and dump them in there and everyone can look. Is that something? I don't know if you have been given access to the Towns Dropbox yet.
Uh, yeah, I can. I can share the folder that I have calling.
Yeah, just do that. And people just let people know when something shows up and they'll always be in one place. So you, we don't have to worry about tracking to any emails.
And private contact information would be redacted. Is that correct?
I think only in the public stuff.
I mean, yeah, that's what I mean. Not not internally. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know.
So by Thursday, hopefully we'll get the appointees from design review and historical commission.
I think we're gonna, those are those are shoe ins in the sense that we they're gonna whoever they choose will be on the committee. So um, I don't know what the
They might not have meetings before then.
Well, Ellen, since you are here, we can put you on the spot. So.
Yeah, I had my hand up.
Do you? Do you have an idea when you're when the design review would would need to select a member to sit on the zoning review advisory committee?
Yes, that's what I wanted to just briefly and say tonight, which was that we will be having a special Zoom meeting either next Monday or Wednesday um, to do that. Because the our our goal is that we want to have someone in place by the twenty fourth, which I believe is the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that I I I'm hoping to get enough. I need to post it. So I'm 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 on it.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
That's excellent, Ellen. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thanks. Okay, so.
So that said, and considering that we don't intend to give away people's phone numbers and email addresses in this meeting. We would defer discussion of specific candidates. I would encourage um, all the members of the planning board to review everyone that's in the packet um, up through Hank Lynn's most recent submittal and come to the special planning board meeting on October seventeenth with their thoughts organized about what their thoughts about the the merits of this particular person or that particular person based on their what they would bring to the table. And or the merits of accepting everyone who applied by that date, which is on five P M on the twelfth. And we'll see um, that how we can pull together a really helpful and experienced and insightful advisory committee. Everybody cool with that?
Yeah, I'm Taylor. If you could just reach out to those folks and let them know that we will be doing the interviews next Tuesday. That'd be helpful.
Are we advising that they'd be there? That they'd be there?
I think it would if we had them there so that we could talk with them. I think that would be good. So see how many people, how how many people we can get there next Tuesday evening.
Great.
Okay. And with the idea, I think I heard you say, Diab, that we would um, vote a decision before the close of that meeting on the seventeenth.
I would hope we could come to a decision by then. Yeah.
I think we need to because the meeting is the twenty fourth, the second Z RAC meeting is the twenty fourth.
I will. I will let you say the word need and force this group to make a decision. I will just say hope.
Oh, well, there I go again. Little Sally Anna being.
No, 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 you can be. I can be. You can be good cop or bad cop, whichever one you want to be. But yes, I I do think we need to. I I hope that we can come to that decision next week.
Great. Um, so I'm looking at the sketch, the agenda, which is that we were going to discuss at nine P M. Um, the northeastern co-op opportunity. But before we end this topic, is there any other discussion amongst the board? Or even amongst the the c- community members who are watching? Um, questions or discussion about the zoning review advisory committee? We've never, in my knowledge, invited one to advise us before, but these are these are big projects with important policy decisions to be made by the planning board. Does anybody have any comments?
I I just had some questions about design guidelines, but I'm not sure that they fall under the current discussion. I mean, I was sort of thinking about some of the, well, the forty be on Cambridge Street and how that's kind of morphed and evolved. And what does that teach us regarding the current design guidelines? But it seems like that's a conversation that would happen with the consultants.
Well, I think I think you're right. I I think in this conversation, we we don't need to drill down to the specifics of of what we would be adding on a line by line basis. But we we can say that the the scope of work of the Z RAC, as I understand it, and others, please correct me if I'm wrong, is to help the planning board um, with the help of our consultants and our town council, who's a land use attorney. Come up with or provide the planning board with recommendations upon which we will base our policy decisions upon which the consultants and our town council will help us write new zoning for the overlay districts that are in compliance with the MBTA communities three A law. And to come up with updated zoning for G B D two and three. And in all three cases, a focus in the case of three A, a focus will include design standards. Knowing, as I think I understand it, that's the that the Commonwealth has said that our design standards can be neither overly prescriptive or overly um, subjective and that they must pass a test of financial feasibility. And on those three topics, prescriptive, subjective, and feasible. Um, I have much to learn and understand, but that's what I understand about the design standards. Sort of parameters for the three A overlay districts. And then for G B D two and three. I don't believe that we have design standards in our zoning bylaw now, and I hope someone will correct me if that's not wrong. And the idea is that we would find a way to articulate design standards for new development in the North Main Street area being done in response to the project that we're doing to explore ways of improving the livability and the vitality and the economic strength of the North Main Street corridor. So that's what the zoning guidelines are are addressing. And I mean, the zoning bylaw revisions are addressing along with design standards for those two areas um, that would um, be in effect if they're voted at town meeting. So that's kind of what I understand to be the 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 task at hand. And do you have been Taylor? Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think it sounds right. We currently don't have design guidelines for G B D two or three. Um, and I know that we've heard often from Michael Wang and John Rufo form in place that they see the extension of they they want to make design guidelines for those areas which are which work well with the design guidelines from the C B D. Um, because we want it, we we want to retain some of the individual, the feel of the individual parts of that corridor, but we don't want things to be. We want things to flow smoothly. And there's always the question of how the underlying design guidelines for the C B D, which will not change, will how they will be, how will they work with the design guidelines for the overlay districts when people are putting in multifamily by rights? So those are those are. And so the idea is to try to make sure that the guidelines which come in for the overlay uses um, are similar enough to our existing design guidelines so that they're not jarringly different. And so that people will not be too concerned about what's going to happen. Um, so I think those are the concept of of design guidelines is something that we talked about early on when we talked about the North Main Street corridor and how to provide those and yet maintain some of that esoteric eccentricity of North Main Street, uh, which some of us like. So
Right.
So I think that's a, yeah.
I I I think one of the questions that has come to me is a clarification, which we will arrive at in our work and provide to the zoning review advisory committee about how design standards in overlay districts relate to design standards in the underlying zoning. And we will work that out with counsel and consultants and make sure that we comply with land use law with regards to that question.
Yeah, and it's one of the one of the three legs of the steel you pointed out, Sally, was that the idea is the state doesn't want guidelines which provide, which create a financial burden to development. And so that's something that, you know, while we may not have to prove that they don't have a financial burden, we have to make sure that they are not um, overly prescriptive in terms of preventing things. So.
It's gonna be a fine line.
It's it's, you know, the problem with zoning is zoning is never cut and dry, black and white. It's always a balance between values. And so, yeah, it's a fine line, but that's.
It's gonna be a fine line because if if we're if if we're leaning too far toward not being prescriptive, then the design guidelines have no value. But if we lean too far in in the direction of being overly prescriptive, then they don't pass muster. And I think it's going to be a very difficult line.
Well, this is why I'm extremely grateful that the two consulting teams that we're working with, Forman Place, who's been with us for a while, looking at how to best achieve many town planning goals along North Main Street. And Inis Associates coming to help us with the three A outreach and also clarity on compliance questions. I'm I'm really grateful that we have these two teams partnering with us. We're putting together a really good team to bring three A compliance to Winchester. And I think that we have much to be hopeful about.
And I I'd also like to point out that we're in a pretty interesting spot. Uh, because we have towns like Arlington, towns like Milton, who are going up and and presenting their design guidelines next month to 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 town meeting. And it's going to be, I mean, we're, I'm I'm going to be reviewing every single word in there in 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 what they're doing and 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 we'll and we'll have the opportunity to take a look at 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 what's happening at what people are saying and, you know, kind of build off of um, off of those those examples. It's it's a interesting, it's going to be an interesting next few months as as those town meetings come.
So and I actually to piggyback on that, Taylor, that that the three things when we when we I don't know if we submitted this or we simply came up with draft, fill in the blanks zoning last June when we were working with our state funded. Fill in the blanks zoning last June when we were working with our state funded consultant Beverly. So there's, there's a starting point draft, fill in the blanks zoning structure. Um, and at that time and since then, it's been identified that we need to address more. As the state permits in the zoning, questions of affordability. Questions of design and questions of economic feasibility. And those are not in the sort of. Template that sits on the table right now. So we have our work cut out for us, but, and, and, and to Nick's point. It is a fine line and. We will walk it.
Yeah, so, so I don't think that, I just want a, a little clarity on some of these issues you just brought up. So, of the state is, from the state, it hasn't expanded our affordability. Options, but it has said that, um, if we want to do more than ten percent inclusive, um, or. Deeded affordable units. Um, then we do have to submit a economic feasibility plan to indicate that. The increase in that number will not make it impossible to build. And I know that, um, John Sebier from Housing Partnership Board has been working with Taylor. At securing, uh, looking at getting funding for us to, um, hire a consultant to do that work. I see John just put his hand up. Um, so that's something we're pursuing currently in the C B D. We have two levels of affordability. There's ten percent and fi- and an extra five percent depending upon this number of units. And so if we wanted to do something comparable, we would have to provide the state with a, a plan, a study showing that it's possible. Um, the other thing is that, um, we don't have to show a particular economic feasibility in our zoning. I, I think we just have to look at the requirements and make sure they are reasonable. I don't think there's anything in our current design guidelines which are, which could be seen as. Um, prohibitive to, just to, um, development. So I don't think we have to reach far to achieve that goal.
Right.
Um, but I'm sure John is tired of putting up his, um, electronic hand there. So, John, do you want to chime in?
Uh, well, just a couple of comments. I was, I was gonna try to be quiet. Uh. Yeah, Taylor and I have been working on that economic feasibility analysis, uh, step. Uh, the Mass Housing Partnership Board has agreed to fund that. Uh, they have selected a consultant. We're gonna be meeting with that consultant, uh, probably. End of this week or the next week, uh, in there. It's the same consultant that did the E F A for Lexington. Uh, and, and I think those of us who read the Lexington analysis were, uh, very impressed with it. Uh, and then the only other thing I would say is, um. If, if the trigger in Winchester is the, the kind of what I call the second step. Where, uh, five percent of the units, uh, in a building that's. Contains more than twenty four housing units, uh, have to be, uh. Affordable at a hundred and twenty percent of, uh, income. Both Taylor and I, Taylor can disagree with me, but. Both Taylor and I, when we looked at the Lexington results, uh, there was absolutely no doubt. That, uh, Winchester is current inclusionary zoning bylaw is financially feasible. And, uh. In there, uh, I mean, we had no trouble with it at six fifty four Main Street. We had no trouble with it at ten Converse Place. You know, it's, it's easy to achieve and it's, it's not resulting in projects not being feasible. But I think the key thing is that, uh, you know, it's gonna be funded, uh. What we need to do now is to develop a detailed work plan. And that, that will be reviewed by anyone who wants to review it.
That's, that's excellent news, John. I, I hadn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware that it did actually come to the point where we'd been, we'd been approved for the funding, so that's great.
Right. So, uh. Do we have comments from anybody else here? Um, about, um, the rezoning work, uh, the work to be done to create new zoning. For our multiple, multifamily housing by right districts. Um, and, or, um, our, uh. Plan to create design standards for new development on North Main Street. Anybody have any comments about that in the audience? Okay. Well. We look forward to seating the Z RAC on the seventeenth.
I do think that it's been helpful, Sally. I, I know that you had, was it, um, a meeting with Ellen today, right?
Well, I met yesterday with Jamie. Who's on, she and I, um, ran into each other and she asked if she could have a, a, almost like a tutorial. And it was a good opportunity, it was a good opportunity for me to, um, practice articulating a really complex. Topic.
And I think that that would be such a great way for us on the planning board, each member too, to start to do that. Um, and start to articulate this. I, I hate calling this a very complex problem because when you, when you introduce it like that, it, people sort of start to shut down. But in.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Do P R with it and to, to, to bring back the questions like you did, Sally, with that, that, um, others have had. And to figure it out for ourselves so that we are more confident in, in our deliberations. And understanding why we're doing the things that we're doing. Um, I, I did one of these things for, what, that, that the temple. Uh, um, the temple had, be- because lot, lots of their, their, um. Congressmen are in Arlington. Um, I think a lot of people were wondering what was going on with Winchester as well. And I made a presentation and in doing so, it was, it was so, um. It was so good for me to understand those questions, like why are we doing it wedge, not at Wedgmead and at Winchester Station? Or, you know, why, how many, how many units and why, why this, why that? And to, to be able to do that. And I think. You know, maybe going forward, each one of us, you know, can, can start to do that work with the, our liaison committees. And, and start to, you know, go out, take, take the message and then bring back some of the questions and. Figure it out for ourselves too. And, and get this board really, um, firm on what we're gonna be presenting to town meeting.
And, and I, and I would add to that, Yicheng, that, um, Emily Innis brings to the consulting team. Lots of expertise in communications and community outreach. And, um, in addition, the consultants, um, have asked to meet. With Taylor and Diab and me as the vice chair. Um, to kick off a discussion of the logistics of the rolling out of all of our outreach materials. So like I mentioned earlier, something about F A Qs, maybe that was on a different topic. I think that was maybe civico, but still. One of the things that, that every community does is frequently ask questions. They use their website, they use community meetings. So there's a very robust, um, uh, what would I call it? Roadmap already in place.
Yeah.
Um, from other M B T A communities for community outreach and communications. And I'm really psyched to get it started.
Yeah.
Really psyched that Emily is here to help us.
That's, that's very important. I've, I've started to hear some of this information after even as well with M B T A. For example, one, one person who should know a lot more, I, I, I was surprised, but asked whether the M B T A. Um, would stop service at towns who don't comply. And I mean, it's a legitimate question, but I mean. I, you know, it should be known that we, they're not and what, what consequences might be, um.
The consequences are, are fairly severe for the towns. I think there's.
Should definitely, um, you know, be very, very clear about what that is, how, how much that is, what, what the money amount is and, you know. Let town meeting make those decisions, clearly.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know what the money is.
Well, if you, if you were to go through, you could do it. I just need someone to do the financial analysis.
Yeah, me and Beth are doing it.
Oh, good. About what non-compliance would cost us?
Yeah.
That's fantastic. If you, if you look at the website, they, they, they explain that. There's a portal for huge numbers of grant programs that are administered by the state. And the portal is called Mass Works. And communities that have chosen to not comply. The M B T A communities that have chosen to not comply so far, um. Um, are on notice that they will lose access to that portal. Um, to apply for grant funds from the state. And I believe in the guidelines, it actually lists fourteen different grant programs. And the guidelines are available online and I think we might even have them on our website. I don't know, Taylor. But that particular question, what is the cost of non-compliance? I'm thrilled that Taylor and Beth are quantifying it. Um, by.
It would be interesting to know what we've applied for in the, in the past five years, what we've gotten. That would be, that'd be, that'd be interesting as well.
Yeah, one, one of the potential members for the Z RAC has already brought up that, that point. In terms of, so I think the Z RAC will be very interested in pursuing that as well, so. Um.
So it's, it's nine P M. And I am not hearing other discussion, although I can wait another half a minute to see who wants to. Chime in further.
I think, I think we've, we're good to go for the next one, which is.
Northeastern Co-op.
Yes.
And this is a topic that I heard Taylor mention. Um, he's been doing some work with the, um, the colleague, his colleagues in town hall. And I'd love to hear a report.
So I brought up the, the idea and I would love to hear feedback from, from everyone here. Um, to increase our, our capacity, especially with all this three A work. Um, particularly with, with technical skills that, that I, I either do not have. Or we as a team don't have the capacity for like G I S or additional outreach, so on and so forth. Um, the opportunity to bring on a northeastern co-op for the spring. Which would be, uh, uh, ju-. Ju- excuse me, January to June. So it's half a year, it's six months. Um, we would be able to, um. Uh, this would be funded through, uh, essentially what is the gap between. Um, you know, we, we, we didn't have a planner for eight months. Um, and, uh, my salary is different than my predecessors. Which all totals a comfortable amount, which allows us to, to hire someone like this. On a full-time basis for that six months. All those benefi- all the benefits, uh, that are required for that are provided by Northeastern. So we wouldn't have to provide any additional benefits to the, to the co-op. Just a hourly sour- salary for thirty, excuse me, thirty-five hours a week. So before I go, you know, further into kind of the details. Um, I would like to hear any feedback from, from anyone, if this is a good idea, a bad idea, anything interesting. Or if it would be interesting.
Well, it seems like we have a tremendous amount of work to do. If we can, um. Get, I, I guess, uh. I mean, someone's gonna have to work with the, this individual to get them up to speed on what they would have to do. But it would seem to me that it's. I mean, if we ca- if, if we can make it work, um, I mean, I, I even kind of see. Taylor, I mean, I imagine that you're under, you've got a tremendous amount going on right now, um. And then if we can get some additional hands on deck, uh, that would be a good thing.
I think it's a great idea, Taylor. I don't know why we didn't think of it sooner. Thank goodness, we brought you in and you thunk of it.
Yeah, I think it's an exciting opportunity for the town. As long as it doesn't add to your burden and those are hands that will help you. I think it's great. It's good.
I, I, I've worked at firms with Northeastern and, um, co-op students before and it seems to have worked well. They do high quality work. Um, I'm a little bit reluctant to, um, do some cheaper labor for design, um. Folks who are starting up, because I, it, it seems like it's a, it's a trope in, in the, in the industry, in the design industry that uses a lot of people who, uh. With, with a little pay, but you know, I, um, it, it sort of perpetuates. Um, a sort of elitism in, in design and that, that a lot of people are, it's, it makes it hard to get into. But I understand the, the northeastern co-op is sort of a different animal and sort of has a lot more support and bolstering. Of the students. And so I would, I would think that that would be great, especially for some of the technical still stuff. Um, you know, G I S, Illustrator, Photoshop, like those things are so, um. So easy for, for some of these students and, and yet it's, it's so painful for, um, you know. If you're doing other things, um, like you are, Taylor. So I, I think that, um, it would be a great opportunity. If it, if it isn't too much work on you.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't imagine it being too much, of course, you know. Those rotating glasses, I guess, but I, I, I don't, I don't imagine it being, um, being too much work. If, if it's prepared for correctly. Um, and, and, and to, just, just so that you know, the process is. Um. You, you submit your job description, which I have here. You, you, you submit your, your job description and then you submit it to a school. So you can open it up to any student or you can narrow it down to a, to an individual program. So if you want, you can say, I only want students studying urban planning. Or I only, only want stu- students studying policy or something like that. I don't think that that's the best thing to do, narrow it down that far, but. You can be pretty particular. Another thing to note is that we can enter into the program with, with. Legitimately no downside. Uh, we can pull out at, at, at any time before we hire someone. Um, and, you know, we, we, we don't have to go through with hiring someone. So we could go through the whole process, not find anyone that, that, that we, that we like or that works with us, and that's okay.
So, and, and to follow on that, Taylor, what is the screening and selection process? Does that happen at Northeastern or does it happen? In Winchester?
No, it's like a normal job hire.
Okay. So we would see candidates and, and qualifications and interviews?
That's correct. Yeah, there, they do have to go through the por- uh, portal, so they. They, you know, we get provided, if we ask for, you know, they, we, we get their transcripts, we get their G P A and. And, and all that. So, you know, we get some de- some details provided to us. And in order to be in the co-op program, you have to be of good standing, so. Yeah.
And, and the other comment that I wanted to make is that we learned from looking for a new town planner. That because of the housing crisis across the country, the profession of urban planning is, um. Not turning out as many planners as the country needs right now. And so kudos to Northeastern. And kudos to their co-op program. And, um, hopefully we'll find someone really great and we'll just launch them. Into their brilliant career.
So, I wanna, I wanna shout that this is a great idea.
Can't hear you, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's a great idea. Um, I know that, um. Taylor and I spoke about this a bit last week and the idea was that we would take our existing job description.
I'm not even sharing my screen. I'm sorry. I totally said.
Oh, good, here it is. Thank you.
There it is. So this is, we had talked about simply taking our assistant planner and, and throwing stuff out until it made sense for a co-op. But, uh, this sounds like you've done that.
Yeah, so this is, I'll, I'll, um, I'll share this, it's in the, I don't know where it is. I'll, I'll, I'll email it to, to all of you. But keep in mind, the only thing that I did was take the existing assistant planner position, job description. Removed assistant planner and replaced it with co-op and just a few line items that didn't make any sense. Um, and added assist with compliance. So, so this, this is very rough. I don't want anyone to think that this is, um. You know, what, what we're moving with, but I think that this is top one.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest removing that last bullet. Provide support to Zambia to, yeah, that's a bit much for a co-op student.
Um.
Yeah, I'd rather have that be focused on you, Taylor.
This, if this. If this co-op student is, um, really excellent, is it, is there a possibility for them to stay on through the summer and into next semester?
No.
No, it's just a one-time thing.
Yes, because the co-op program only works, it, it, it's, it's taking, so, so they're, they're earning credit. As if they were, as if they were at school for a normal semester. So they, they do have to go back to school. The, the following semester. If they work out really well.
Yeah.
Well, this, this will be the su- well, yeah, so I guess there's two months of which we could hire them as an intern. But so there, there, there is potential there, but it's not uncommon for students to be hired at wherever they interned the year after.
Yeah.
Right. Do their co-op.
Right, because it's the year before they graduate, so they're pretty close to graduating.
Yeah. This, I, I don't know, I have, my, my partner was a co-op in Northeastern Moscow, I can ask her, she went to a number of co-ops, so. I wonder how many of them were right, right before she graduated, I don't remember. Um, anyway, um. This is, I'm, this is really good, I'm really excited. I just, one slight technical point. Um, we only get to use the money that, um, accrued since July. Unfortunately, we don't get to the full eight months of back salary, because we had to turn everything. Everything that wasn't spent before June thirty-first goes back to the town, so.
Right.
But there's sufficient monies in our current fiscal twenty-four, are we in twenty-four?
Yes, we are.
To, to be able to do this, so, um.
Great.
That's great.
This is excellent. Um, and I personally, I would prefer someone who is, who is interested in going into planning, because I think that would really be great, but whatever. Oh, and it says they're planning a related field, okay. So I guess the, we got the go-ahead, we get to move on to the next topic, which is.
Does the planning board need to vote to accept Taylor's proposal? To hire a co-op student from Northeastern for January to June of next year?
Why don't we? You know.
You don't think so?
Think so. I think it really comes down to when, when we start getting people in, we can make that decision. I think you've, you've got the go-ahead, Taylor, I think that's key.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and give it, keep us posted on what you think would be a timeline for, um, people applying, us interviewing them and them starting. Well, starting would be January.
People will be applying soon. People will be applying by, 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 by mid, uh, mid-October. And something just to keep in mind is that we technically have up until December thirty-first to make our decision. But the, as you can imagine, the best students are selected first, so.
Well, we'll just be nimble, get a good one.
Great thinking.
So, um, let's move on to the nine-ten, um, agenda item. Which is, um, for the planning board outreach materials, and is this in our packet, Taylor? The slogans, last page, thank you.
So this is, this is the, this is the design and I can bring the slogans up after we look at the design.
Right, so this is, this, and Taylor, um, this is the design that the.
With a banner, this is a banner design.
This is a banner design, but it incorporates the newly selected by the board logo for the planning board, along with the town seal. Um, and it's got one sample slogan at the bottom, and this would be the banner that the planning board would use, um, wherever we can put it when we're having community events. Though the slogan, um, is some, is, is an opportu- we have the opportunity right now to choose our slogan. So I, I hand it off to Taylor.
Yes, so that is correct. One, one additional note that I'll make is that this type of look and feel will also be the idea to replicate for all marketing materials moving forwards. For example, if we wanted to market or, or make a poster board of zoning map, which we will do. Um, we'll use the new. You know, the new logo and some, some design. Stop at the bottom here.
Template, yeah.
Templates, thank you. And that will be the same for, for all, for all, all materials. Obviously, we don't. We, it can be a little flexible, but you know, colors, design direction would be.
Yeah.
Roughly the same for all materials moving forward. I guess we can talk about the slogan first.
Yes, do we have a screen? Oh, yeah, thank you.
It's just in my email, so. I don't know if anyone got the chance to come up with any. Excuse me.
I was a little surprised that there was a logo. And right now, shaping Winchester's future together sounds innocuous to me. But I all, I'm a little wary of it aging and maybe something will come up where, you know, it becomes a little problematic or something. But I just, it, it was a little bit surprising that we, we would have a logo.
A logo?
I mean, sorry, a slogan.
So that, that was just a placeholder slogan, and, uh. I don't know why, that was just a placeholder slogan that Reagan put in.
Yeah.
Just based upon her making banners for other municipalities where they included slogans, so.
So I see it is one of the choices being presented to us tonight.
Yeah, these, these are just choices and we can discuss what we like. I mean, each, if you, you are opposed to the slogan in general, we can discuss that too.
Surprised by it.
Can you explain what's surprising about it?
Um, it seems like a campaign to me, like, it's like, it's like a campaign slogan almost, right? Like, it's, uh, but it, it's, um, it's not a negative thing. It's just that, you know, it's, it's got a lot of those key words, right, together and future and planning and, um. I, I was thinking like just, you know, the, the logo would speak for itself. But I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, I just, this just doesn't feel right yet.
So the second bullet strikes me as, um, a very obvious statement of what a planning board does. And many people don't know what a planning board does. So an argument for the second bullet would be that it's, it's a clarifying statement of our purpose. And particularly our future with regards to land use. Um, because we have many other boards working on our future, um, through other lenses.
So do you think that the planning versus the shaping is a better word? It sort of repeats what the board's name.
I know, I like shaping myself.
Yeah.
I, I, if I had to pick one of those three, I think I like the first one. Uh, I think I like together better than collaborating. Um, it sounds a little more, um. So somehow, uh, more approachable, shaping Winchester future together than collaborating for Winchester future, which is also true. And it also, uh, means collaborating means together, but it, uh, I, I think if I had to pick one of the three, it would have been the top one.
I hesitate to future in there, because I think we're such a historic town, though.
Also.
Oh, that's interesting.
Historic town. I mean, most of the buildings in this town were built after nineteen fifty. So there's a, there's a such a mix, there's such a mix in this town between, you know, historic structures and newer structures that.
Yeah, but I think it's fair to say that we're a historic town.
Future.
Well, we are shaping the future. The planning board is supposed to be shaping things for twenty to thirty years ahead, right?
Right.
So with the future can, the future includes the historic nature of the town.
Sure, yeah, I mean, what to preserve moving forward. I know, I just, it seems like a master plan slogan and not a planning board.
So the purpose of the slogan, let's just take a quick minute to talk about, what is this, what is this slogan supposed to do? It's sort of a marketing question. What, Carrie?
People should read it and have some insight into what, like, why would they call us? It's kind of like the point of a slogan, right?
Uh, to me, uh, just, go ahead, E Ching.
Oh, I, I'm wondering if it adds to our mission at all. And, and, and maybe it does, I think, I think you're right, it clarifies it a little bit more. My, my question with the shaping part is also that it sounds so physical. And it's true, a lot of our work is sort of a physical shaping of the, the material world here. But there's also an economic, um, component, there's sort of a, uh, you know. An energies kind of component that, I mean, it's not, it's not completely all physical too, right? But shaping, I guess you could, you could, you know, stretch it to mean in the econ- economic and, and, um, sort of social planning as well.
Yeah.
And I, and I think, I think the, the together word, um, implies not only together with all the residents of our community, but also all of the boards and committees and staff of our town. Um, that we're all, there's, there's an ecology of expertise.
Yeah, I think that together is great.
So Nick, you had something?
Uh, no, I, I, um, I, I, I was just gonna say that shaping probably can be interpreted, interpreted a little more broadly, uh, and, and be, be effective.
What about just shaping Winchester together? No, those students, that's.
So I have a problem with shaping, because in a sense, shaping is saying that we know what Winchester's gonna look like in the future and we're moving towards that. When I think at some level, what we're doing is we're trying to create a foundation so that the future of Winchester can make their own decisions and have the resources to do so.
So it's almost like you're saying, setting a platform.
And creating, empowering.
Yeah, because if I, if, if we were to go back forty years and, and shake our fists at the planning board, I think we would have said, why are you doing this? You're, you're, you're creating things in town which we are not going to be able to deal with forty years from now. So it's just a question of shaping, as in my mind, implies you know where you're going.
What about guiding?
Creating, empowering.
Yeah.
Exploring. Envisioning.
That, that's, that sounds too, um, too non-active.
Yeah, it sounds very ambig- ambivalent, yeah. Eh, we can talk about it. I hear what you're saying, Deanne, about the word shaping sounding like we have premeditated, um. Uh, um, agenda. And that we're gonna shape it to that. And in fact, it's collaborating is, is a good word because it means that there's a collective conversation, um, and input. And the bottom line is that the planning board is tasked with voting on a policy decision that will roll forward twenty to forty years, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know, I, in that sense, collaborating is, is, I, I, I agree with, with Nick's statement that together is, is a, is a much more approachable word.
It is.
Collaborating, yeah, and you know, I think of this as, you know, providing the opportunity for every generation to be able to make their own decisions without being trapped by the past too much. And so I think.
That's right.
And, but that's, that's a, I don't know how you say that in one word, because I think we're down to one word.
Well, so it sounds like we like the first one and, but we're concerned that shaping sounds a bit premeditated or mechanistic.
That's, that's my, that's my, you know, I can be, I can be convinced otherwise, but, um, I just.
About like leading, organizing, like that sort of like, uh.
Leaning into.
So maybe we need to think about this a bit. I'm, I think, I'm just, um.
Well, it's certainly a valuable conversation.
Yeah.
And it, and it, it gives us a platform for each of us to do our homework and maybe mess around with online thesauruses.
Yeah, and I, I wonder if the, um, questioning of, of each word here is almost indicative of the, that it, it might not be, um. Gracious enough to hold up, you know, all of our opinions as well as, you know, into the future. And I, I don't know if we should, we should nail down a slogan now and it, and, and stop the delay of just rolling out the logo itself.
We could do mapping, what, mapping Winchester's future because we've got our little map on there.
I don't think that mapping is all-inclusive of what we do.
I, I asked Reagan if we could just put like a little chalkboard at the bottom or we could write whatever slogan we felt with at the time. Just, just have a magic eraser type, you know, spot on the, on this, on the banner.
So i- it, it occurs to me to go and look at, um, not only the town bylaw that establishes the planning board's responsibilities, but also the state's law that says that every community that has a population of over, I think it's ten thousand, I could be wrong, shall have a planning board for the purpose of. And so those two documents can inform, um, a continuation of this conversation.
You can boil them down into five words, then my hat is off to you, Sally.
Four.
There are four, those are verbose, verbose documents.
I, I, I'm, I'm good with the yellow highlighter, I'll see what I can find.
I think you take it as a challenge.
I do.
Yeah.
We're gonna kick this down the road, right? But can we talk about the, the image self?
Yeah, we can kick this down the road, why don't we, why don't we talk about this next week? I think we can squeeze this in next week, because.
Oh, but no, just, just even.
Just right now, you wanna talk about?
Okay, let's, yeah, the image, yeah.
Put up that image.
So one, yeah, one, one thing I just wanna note is that we, we did want to have the slogan uh, finalized by the seventeenth, because we wanted to have the banner printed for town meeting. And we need that much time to get it ready for town meeting. I will, what, what I'm hearing from, from everyone is, I think I will start a shared document and throw in what we've been talking about. Can look at that, you don't have to look at that, do whatever works best for, for you all, but that shared document will be there. Um, I think it's also worth considering if the slogan is, is, is necessary. That's all.
Yeah. I'm considering whether or not those, those squares are necessary still. Those color squares.
So we, we brought that up when you, or we brought your comment up when
Yeah.
I last spoke with Reagan and she was really concerned about the, like, the, on the bottom one. Just the.
It just floats.
Monotone.
I know, but when you, when you showed it on the, when you showed it on the map especially, it really looked like a printer's mark. So what, when.
Like a registration mark?
Like a registration mark, I think, there's something, somebody at Kinko's forgot to take that off.
Oh, I get what you're saying there now.
Yeah.
Winchester, but it's spelled like Taylor's name.
Was that, Carrie, what did you say?
We could do an inside joke like tailoring Winchester, but we spelled it.
We could say crafting, well, let's not, let's not go off into the world of synonyms, but this is a good conversation.
So can we go back to those, to, to, yeah, so, so your concern, E Ching, is not with the colors, but with the way they're depicted.
So even, even say, I, it's just a square all of a sudden in the midst of all of this, all of these other geometries is a little bit funny to me because it is, is, it is so printer mark looking. Um, you know, if she really want, and if, if others decide that, that these colors really need to sort of come back and break the left with the right somehow, I would say, you know, maybe lines, you know, you, like. Somehow, she had, she had like these like forward-looking lines, like thicker bars in these, that might look a little bit less printer-marky. Um.
So sort of like left-to-right leaning slashes or something like that?
Something like that.
Or what about, what about, um, mirroring the circle that's in the logo?
Perhaps, but that's against, yeah, maybe the circle.
If we put the circle under the blue line above, it'll look like an exclamation point.
Oh, true, that's kind of not a bad thing.
I don't, I don't know if that's a bad thing, do we wanna be alarming?
Planning board!
It's exciting, it's exciting.
Or we could just mimic the line, do a white line on blue instead of a blue line on white, it's a bit dull, but it would work.
Or.
She really wanted to bring the colors back.
I think she wanted to have a sort of that.
Winchester dot U S and shaping, so this, so the blocks aren't quite so, you, you know, like, so.
Yeah, so maybe, okay, so we don't, I, I, what the sense I get is that the colors are not. the colors are not an issue, it's the fact they look a little too much like printers' marks, like color marks.
Yeah, the registration marks to make sure your color printing lines up. The reason I think that Winchester U S is under the logo and the slogan is under the planning board is because they are addressing the item above.
I know, I'm just thinking visually. I mean, I I I know, but so three blocks of the same color, maybe the gr- the dark green or something from the logo?
Yeah, I think it is. Um, I actually like the use of color in the bar at the bottom as opposed to not having it. And I like the suggestions that people have made to have Reagan explore other ways of incorporating that color. I I think it 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 lightens up the spirit of the banner. Um, s- to say, it's it's a little bit more energetic and um dare I say optimistic. Um.
I think the three blocks should be the dark green though, because you really want the yellow on the, on the map to pop, cuz that's our town center.
I see, okay. So how shall we proceed? We're gonna, we're gonna um have it on the agenda for the seventeenth um to choose a logo, um not a logo, excuse me, a slogan, I did it. Um, but d- does someone want from the board wanna work with Reagan in the week ahead to also examine the use of color in the lower bar?
I, I think I can do that. If someone wants, if someone from the board wants to join me, feel free, but I can definitely handle that.
Great.
Yeah, I think we've got, I mean, I really like the three colors. I think Carrie is makes a good point. But I'd like to see, um, I'd like to see the three colors there just cuz let's get, let's have a couple of, couple of choices with and without, you know, with one color or with three colors and see how it looks.
There's lots of shapes to incorporate that would not be evocative of 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 putting registration marks inside the printed area. You know, the image area, so um then that would be our plan, correct?
Hmm.
Okay. Um. So nine thirty-two, Diab, do you wanna talk about the the town meeting report?
Yeah, so we're kind of running up against the deadline, so we need to, we need to get together a town meeting report. So um we need to not only have it have the the board talk about it, I need to write it up and then bring it back to the board for your okay prior to town meeting, cuz the town moderator wants to have a sign-off from the boards on the content of the report.
What date does she require that we submit it?
I could not tell you. I don't think she requires, I think we can submit that right up until town meeting. Um, this is gonna be a live report, so it won't have to be, it's not gonna be written, so it can be, I can show up at town meeting with the report. Um, so the question tonight really is to talk a little bit about what the board wants to see in the report. Um, you know, in the past, we've done the standard sort of here are the projects that are around town, you know, sort of update on on another multifamily housing project, so we would say something about um, I think I already talked about six fifty-four. We don't know what's going on with the six fifty-four and seven, whatever, the the um Mahoney, the old Mahoney building next to town pantry, which is no more. I don't know what's going on with either of those sites. They both have gone through um all legal challenges. Um, ten Congress is still s- somewhere, I don't know where it's at. It's in, just say it's in legal, it's been, you know, appealed. Um, the two forty Bs, I believe, are um, they're open for, they're, they're getting their, their certificates of occupancy. And that's a complex thing, I don't know. Excuse me, how much of that, how much of those are already open, but they're, they're in the CO stage. Um, so those, that's the standard sort of thing. Um, is there some other special? So we'll have something about three A, obviously, we'll be talking about three A, and we'll talking about North Main Street, so we have about ten minutes.
I think you should give an ADU update on how many permits have been applied for.
So an ADU update.
I think we should talk about the work that the M A P C has done for us um with the um light industrial zoned areas and the um adjacent residential areas, the whole Holton Swanton Cross. Um, and talk about um how that project will continue to roll forward um uh with the help of volunteers um and gather more community input so that when we get through the deadlines for three A, we can return our, our robust focus to zoning changes that will address all the needs of that part of town. I don't wanna drop it completely. Um, I I I'm looking at it through the lens of a town meeting member. Um, and especially when I was a new town meeting member, I never understood what or why anything was presented. So I I think, I mean, just being a new town meeting member is baffling and I, and I kudos to the Town Me- Meeting Members Association for getting going. But I, as a town meeting member, would wanna know, what is the planning board working on? And um uh and why are they working on those things? Um, and um uh um what are we doing? What are we working on? What are we doing? And why are we working on those things? Does that help at all?
Sure, I just, um, I just want, I'm trying to but that helps. Um, I don't remember if we said anything about this in the spring that we could start. I don't remember if we did sort of a, what does the planning board do? I think we did something.
I think we, I I think we might have had something and and we can go back and look at that presentation. And Diab, I'm, I'm happy to help you with it um to the extent that you would like.
I'm gonna try to come up with a um assuming that my brain starts working again, my um, I'm hoping to draw up a draft and maybe I'll get it out to you guys. I won't get it by this Friday. But over the weekend, just a really rough draft. I think the key is we have to look at, we've got ten minutes. So we've got ten slides, if we do a minute a slide, which is standard. Um, some of these, so what is it? So I would imagine that three A North Main Street is gonna occupy at least three minutes, maybe four. Um, ADU update and you know, I'm just dividing it up and see how much time we've got.
Yeah, and and an I L update.
Yeah, so that's about, that's one slide worth, so let's call it one minute. Um, the, the question of what is the planning board working on and why, that's, you know, there's a I think it's a good idea. I think we have to kind of approach it at the level of an introduction to some of what the planning board does and how we, how we, I don't know. So I, so some further thoughts on fl- flushing that idea out would be useful.
So, so my thought when I said and why, um, it actually provides um an opportunity for us to incorporate the master plan and the M P I C into our comments. And I know that the M P I C hasn't exactly taken a rigorous leap into existence. Um, but the reason that we're working on North Main Street and the reason that we're working on the I L areas of town is because those were identified in the master plan as opportunity areas with the planning board being the primary responsible party. Um, and the reason that we're working on the three A is because it's a zoning requirement that has been, um, that has come to us as a requirement. And we are the people responsible for zoning. So the why is a combination of the master plan and um our, our, our purpose. And so starting with, why do we exist? Because we have a town bylaw. A town, it's, it's not a bylaw, it's a um
Well, we exist because of the the mass general law.
Right. And then beyond that, we are, we are further empowered or directed by it or by a town bylaw, but the, the, the overarching one is that the state says towns shall plan and they shall have a planning board to do it.
Right, so um, you know, I think if my, my, my concern is we just talk about North Main Street and three A in terms of what we're working on. I, I think that's just it's a narrow focus, although it's important, but we do talk about other things, right? We've got, we talk about the environment with the trees. By the way, everyone, I hope everyone will be able to make it out this weekend to see the new um uh.
Milwaukee, Milwaukee Forest.
Milwaukee, thank you, at that, at the farm. That's very exciting. They've got one in Cambridge, so it's really great.
So that raises a really interesting point, Diab, which is um with the planning board's collaborations with fellow boards and committees and councils and commissions. Or if not collaborations, at least our, our interaction with or support for the work of.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it would be good if we were able to point at some concrete results of that collaboration. So I think that the one that really stands out, I think, is, is the trees stuff and also maybe some of the work with housing partnerships, certainly looking at, you know, the three A financial feasibility stuff. Um, but I don't know that we've had.
The A D U.
Well, the A D U was, the A D U was a great collaboration and 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 that is kind of a done deal. And now we're gonna report on, as I think E Ching you suggested, that we report on, on um how it's rolling out.
Which is very slowly.
What?
I mean, it's very small.
Oh, I know, but and 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 you, you commented that the ones that that have not been approved yet, it's because they had procedural or or submittal requirements that they needed to address. Is that correct?
Well, it's also extremely expensive and
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a cheap thing, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we'll come up with maybe some more ideas, um, I'm just looking at the time about fleshing out this idea of what the planning board is working on. What are, I mean, I know, I know we have a relationship, we don't have, you know, I wanna point to things that we, that have been accomplished. Um, cuz I think that's what the, that's what the, the uh town meeting is interested in knowing what's happened. You know, what, what sort of things have we done?
Right, right.
So saying that we work with a lot of people is sort of, yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Well, is it your timeframe for what, what we've done is since the last town meeting, which was in the spring of this year.
Yeah.
No, like a town meeting member might wanna know what's been done prior to that, too.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a, you know, we have a problem with, um, you know, we have to do education for new town meeting members. This'll be their second town meeting s- because of the way we run elections, so they'll have some experience, although they may be slightly less confused. But I've got, you know, if we do three minutes on this, we do three minutes on um, the four minutes on three A, then we've already got seven out of ten. So we do one minute on A D U update and and the Holton Swanton Cross. So we're at eight out of ten. I think we're already pushing what we can do.
One major accomplishment since last spring town meeting was that we were able to recruit and hire Taylor.
Oh, yes, that's, that's, that's huge.
Huge.
That's, that's leading, we're gonna lead that. Taylor, I need to have all those balloons that were floating up on your screen.
I don't know. I like waved my hand and they all went up.
Did, you don't know how you did that?
No.
Well, let's just
You mean if we all just do that?
No, I'm pretty sure mine, mine, you'll just see me waving.
Oh, my God, Taylor!
Magical.
There are a few other ones.
Yeah.
All right, Taylor's over there having a party.
Well, Taylor's, Taylor's obviously ready for this meeting to end.
So I think that we could entertain a motion to um end the meeting. Am I correct about that?
Well, before we entertain that, um, if people would send me their suggestions for what they'd like to see and sort of fill this out, so I get my idea. I would appreciate that. I will try working on something in a draft this weekend and get it out to you again, provided my brain starts working.
And the other homework assignment is to um try to mess around with words for a slogan.
And also read, read everyone's resumes by next Tuesday.
That's right.
So
Logan and resumes.
After that, um, now I believe entertaining a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent. Uh, so roll call vote, please. Uh, Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
E Ching?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Um, so thank you, everyone, uh, who has joined us this evening. Uh, thanks, Taylor, our town. You're not our town manager. You're a town, what did you do? You're a town planner. Uh, Wind Cam, our recording secretary, Nancy Polkari. Thanks to all members of our community who joined us. Thanks to um everyone out there in TV land. And uh we will see you in one week. Have a great evening and a great weekend, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.